All right, I now call the August 5th, 2025 Regular Meeting of City Council to order. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by Brian Nevins of Calvary Chapel of Northern Kentucky. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you. If you would please pray with me. Our Lord and God, we come to you with all prayer and supplication with thanksgiving, and the promise that you give peace that passes understanding with the mind of Christ. We thank you for your great provision for a great place to live, for the privilege of gathering and self-government, and recognizing the responsibilities and freedoms it carries. We also want to recognize the passing of our dear friend and neighbor Patty Sudkamp, and we ask for your grace and your comfort upon her family and friends. We're reminded that all life comes to the same end, and we are here only by your will. We ask that our city officials be protected with the precious and very expensive rights that have been guarded by brave men and women, that they take their responsibilities to the residents of our friendship city with the gravity and wisdom they need and deserve, without personal agendas or pursuits, that they may be men and women of virtue, integrity, and with a heart of humble service. So we pray for wisdom for Mayor Fetty, for our city administrator, and for this assembled council. We thank you for their service. Grant them wisdom and insight for the needs of our citizens and a single mission in their pursuits to meet them. I ask that you hold them to a very high standard of integrity, especially since you will judge them for every action. We pray for Chiefs Raider and Gottse and for all of our first responders, and we thank you for them also. We ask that you keep them safe as they work to keep us safe. We ask for your blessing upon them and their families, Father. We ask that you grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We also want to pray for the agenda set before them today, and please make clear to them what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Erlanger, that they remember, as your word says in Proverbs 3:5 and 6, "Trust the Lord and do not lean on your own understanding; in all your ways acknowledge him, and he will make your path straight." Let us not arrogantly think that we will do this or that in the coming year, but only as you will it. And it's in the blessed name of Jesus that we ask these things. Amen.
Thank you, Brian. All right, I ask that you please rise for the pledge. All right, Mr. Sobin, if you can please take role. Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Present.
Ms. Fields?
Here.
Mr. Hermes?
Here.
Ms. Jasper Lucas?
Here.
Ms. Nicely?
Present.
Ms. Rakers?
Ms. Skidmore?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
All right, thank you, Sheri. All right, you've received a copy of the minutes for the July 1st, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Mr. Farmer, Mr. Cahill, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. You've also received a copy of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to be made at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt as presented. Ms. Jasper Lucas, Ms. Wilson, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried. All right, our special presentation this evening is our Business Spotlight, and I'll turn the mic over to Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Glenn, if you would tee this up for me, not press play just yet, as I introduce the two folks here from Fable Brew Works. Yep, you can come on up, Kent and John. Kent Wessels and John Lawler are two of the owners, proprietors, bartenders. Kent was just bartending like 15 minutes ago, broke his shift to come up and be our business spotlight. So very, very thankful for you guys attending tonight. They're located at 331 Kenton Lands, and I'll give a little bit more after this presentation, but if you would now press play, Mr. Glenn, this will be on our social media channels tomorrow.
We're a fantasy-themed brewery. You walk into our taproom, and you're in kind of a medieval vibe setting. There's clouds with lightning on the ceiling. There's apothecary on the wall. You go into our event space, and there's a hobbit house there. It's a little more friendly to step into, not just slap some tables into an old warehouse building type thing. And again, that ties into the beer names as well. So the beer names, beer styles, all fantasy-driven. We wanted to be a little more immersive with our environment. There was nobody really liked this in this area, and since we've opened, we work with the library all the time. They have authors come in for book signings, and they'll do happy hours hereafter. It's just nice to be able to do a little follow-up, have a follow-up meeting spot, or if your kids at Silver Lake are swimming, you need a place to hang out for a little bit. We have so many people that walk here just from the neighborhood around us that, yeah, I mean, it's great. We were welcomed with open arms since the day we opened. I mean, the constant support's very much felt on our end. I think there's still some people that haven't gotten a chance to come out and experience us either. So for those people, I think they really should do that. I think we have a lot to offer. You don't have to like beer to come here. There are so many things that we do that appeal to so many different people that if you're a wine drinker, if you're a cocktail drinker, even though we don't make those, we make so many things in those veins that are all handcrafted here. If you came here today, and you came back here two weeks later, you'd find five new things, and everything's going to be made in a way that is not mass-produced. It's going to have a nice personal touch to it.
So Kent and John have also done a really cool thing on behalf of the city, I guess. They brewed a beer called A Walk in the Woods, which is sort of an ode to Eon's Adventure Park. And this was an idea that Kent came to me with. I said, "This is awesome." I don't know how much we can help, but they have stepped in and just made it happen. And the beer's great. I know some of our council members have tried it. We have tried it a few times on the team heading over to Fable Brew Works. And I think, Kent, you might have a little something?
Yeah, we have our first check for the park donation from that, the first month and a half or so of the sales from that beer. Yep.
Awesome. Mayor, do you want to go grab it from them? So, gentlemen, I'll get you that video. You can use it on your own. That's a token of appreciation from the city and is part of our Business Spotlight, something that we'll do on behalf of you guys. So thanks for coming.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that was cool. All right, I should have grabbed. Okay, there's no comment from the public today. Nobody signed up. Okay, mayor's report. I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to the final City Night Out event that happened tonight. It was a little rainy. It was our first one that actually had rained, but we had the tents set up, Public Works had the tents set up, and they did a great job of providing a beautiful dinner and opportunity for conversation with our neighbors. So thank you. This is a Peter Glenn original idea. So I think our three City Night Outs were a fantastic add to our year. So thank you. All right. City Administrator's Report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Tax rate ordinance for this upcoming year, Sheri has let me know that it's something that's into works right now. I'm sorry, I'm talking to Mike. And we're currently awaiting the 4R rate, and once we receive that, then everything will be able to be finalized. So what we need as a legislative body is to have discussions on this rate at our caucus meeting in August, followed by a special meeting, which can happen August 26, where we can take a first reading on the tax rate, and then the second reading being in September, council meeting on September 2. And then that finalized tax rate will be sent out to all council members prior to that caucus meeting. Any questions?
So special meeting August 26 at 7:00 PM, Peter?
That is correct.
All right.
And with that, that's it for me.
Mr. Gatlin, City Attorney's Report?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Mr. Glenn, Capital Projects?
Okay, a couple of projects going on of interest would be Eon's Park. So currently, we're out to bid on the Dog Park parking lot, Phase 1 and Phase 2, along with the intersection of Houston Road and Erlanger Road improvements. And we are opening bids on those two projects, they're combined, on this Thursday, the 7th. Another project of interest is Concord Drive. That'll be part of the bid opening report as well, and that's going to be an ongoing project. Currently, we have Northern Kentucky Water on Concord installing a new water main, which is a pretty disruptive process, no fault of their own, putting a new water main down the middle of the street. So we need a lot of patience from all the residents out there during this time. And that water main work will continue through the end of September, at which time that will be finished, and we'll start the street improvement at that point in time. Thank you.
All right. Are there any reports of task forces?
Just a quick reminder, Mayor. That's okay. Small Business Task Force will be meeting next, right before caucus on the 19th at 5:30.
So like 6 o'clock?
Sheri, do you remember? I think 5:30 is what we said.
5:30? Okay, we'll post it, whether it's 5:30 or 6 o'clock. We'll post it. All right. Is that it, Mark?
It is.
Okay. Mr. Glenn, you have bids tonight? Quite a few?
All right, thank you. We had a total of six bid openings to report on. All of the bids are within budget. So the first one would be a Public Works bid opening on our crack filling or crack ceiling. The low bidder was Scodeler Construction at $1.87 unit. Next would also be a Public Works bid opening for public street striping and pavement markings. We received three bids, and it was awarded the ANA Safety who was the low bid at $40,249.50. And lastly, as mentioned previous, Concord Drive Milling and Resurfacing Project, we also opened that project bids. We received two, and the low bid was Eaton Asphalt at Moving on to the Fire Department, they had two vehicles that they had out for bid, and it was bid, or the lowest bid was Don Franklin at $48,327. I'm sorry, that is two bidders for one vehicle. The next is the Police Department, where they had two bidders as well and five vehicles. And the low bidder, again, was Don Franklin at $41,455 a unit, for a total of $208,775. With the purchase of those five new vehicles, of course, they go out to be outfitted, so that bid was held as well. And we received two bids for outfitting those five vehicles, and the bid will be going to Ridge Net for a total of $79,000 even. And that concludes the bid update. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter. Just to circle back, the Small Business Task Force is 5:30 on the 19th. All right, is there any unfinished business? Okay, is there any new business? Yes.
I have two items that I want to request. The first one is that I'm requesting to add an agenda item to our next caucus meeting regarding motorized scooters and a possible ordinance related to operating them. I've received a number of complaints over the past year from residents and businesses all over Erlanger about the use of motorized scooters on streets and sidewalks. They are specifically concerned about people riding these scooters on the street and also on the sidewalks and not knowing how to operate them safely, and not realizing that there are cars that they're sharing the road with and not using helmets. Many people are also operating them while using electronics. Edgewood recently adopted an ordinance related to motorized scooters, and I think that we could model our legislation around theirs. I know that we have an ordinance related to skateboards for Erlanger, and that may also need to be updated. My goal in proposing legislation related to motorized scooters is not to stop them from being operated, but rather to have them operated safely within the city limits. It's also not my goal that we would necessarily be handing out citations to those who are not operating them safely, but rather that we would have some guidelines to rely on to instruct those who are operating scooters. The next item is regarding an email that has been circulating related to a check that was written in the month of July. I had sent out some questions, and Peter sent a response to that last night. And I do have some additional questions about that that I feel like need to be answered. I would like to know if it's standard procedure to not have water or sewer lines marked when someone is doing work on a street. I understand in Peter's response, email response, that it's not something that 811 marks, but someone does mark those lines. And why wasn't it marked in this particular situation? I also have questions about how do we know that the collapse of the sewer line was caused by the street work that was done? It could have been caused by other things. I realize that Peter referred to this as an unforeseen circumstance, but that does not necessarily remove liability from the contractor and place at all on the city. Also, we haven't received any information about if anyone contacted SD1 about this. It could be that the line needed to be replaced anyway, as it was clearly, as Peter said in his email, closer to the surface than normal. And these are all things that, had this been investigated properly and not rushed to be paid, we may know the answers to this. I just don't feel like the situation was handled properly. I feel like the proper way to handle this would have been to reach out to the contractor and have them submit a claim under their insurance, because we, the city, did not cause the damage. And they have a contract with the city. They should be providing us with a certificate of liability insurance, and then the appropriate way to handle this would be to go under their insurance. So I feel like this needs to be discussed further. Is there something funny?
I'm sorry?
You laughed when I said that, and I just didn't know if it was something funny that I said. I take this matter very seriously.
Didn't laugh? I didn't laugh, but you are...
Concerned about taxpayer money being spent?
Sure, as we all are. We all are very, very intentional with every single dollar that's spent.
So those are the additional questions that I have, because I don't feel like this $10,000-plus should have been, a check should not have been written without further investigation being done. And we should not have paid this contractor in full when they clearly caused damage to something that shouldn't have, I mean, that shouldn't have happened, or it should have been investigated further. Okay. No, that's not what I was requesting, but if that's what you all feel like the appropriate...
Oh, I thought that's what you said.
No, the beginning, no.
To put this on the caucus meeting.
No, that's not what I said.
So in the beginning, you did say that you wanted to add two things to the...
No, I didn't say I wanted to add two things. I said I wanted to add something to the caucus meeting about motorized scooters, and then I brought up a separate issue, which was further explanation about this check that was written and why. I did not say I wanted it to be added to the caucus meeting, but if that's what we feel like is inappropriate place to explain it, then we can certainly do that. I'm just voicing my concerns in a public meeting.
Okay. So we did answer all of your questions, and you had quite a few questions that were asked, and Peter gave a very lengthy and detailed explanation. And some of the questions that you just asked were answered within the email that you received last night. So I guess, is there a difference?
Why did we not contact the contractor and ask them to submit a claim under their insurance?
Okay, so we looked at this in a lot of depth, and what we determined was the damage was unforeseen circumstance. So it's not something that the contractor was aware of when they were bidding the project, nor were they aware of it when they were constructing under the contract. So the means and methods was typical for how to repair or replace a street, and the contractor showed no negligence in his actions and how he went about doing that. So he had no idea, or they had no idea, that there was unforeseen circumstance under the pavement that they did not know until it was made aware that it had been crushed. So we did not feel that was due to their negligence, so we didn't feel it would be proper to go back to the contractor for reimbursement.
Did you ask somebody to review the contract to see if that was the only thing that was required for them to pay? Maybe a city attorney? Has the city attorney reviewed the contract and made the determination?
At that time, no, they have not.
I'm asking the city attorney.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not prepared to discuss it this evening. I'm not sure this is the best form to discuss this. I'd be glad to discuss it offline.
I want it to be discussed in a public meeting, but your response tells me that, no, you are not aware of the situation. And I'm fine with having a discussion at our caucus meeting, but there are additional questions. There needs to be a further investigation done on this. Saying that the city has no, or that the contractor has no negligence in this, and that... that the contract that they signed didn't require them to pay for this, I think is something that isn't necessarily something that the city administrator can make the determination on. And I still think that this is not an appropriate use of city funds, because the contractor signs a contract and says that they will be held liable for something. I'm not, I still want to know, why is it not standard procedure that these lines are marked? If there's a possibility that they're going to hit the line, and the only person that I've been told... Excuse me. I'm speaking. Yeah, I know, I have the floor. That's parliamentary procedure. No, I don't. I'm speaking, and I would like for you to not speak while I am speaking. I feel like that's respectful of your peers.
Okay.
No. I'm, excuse me?
All right. There are many times over the course of the seven and a half years of a mayor that other people are talking while other people are talking. It is not the end of the world. We are all listening to you.
No, everyone wasn't, and that is extremely disrespectful. And it is something that you, as the mayor, should call out a fellow council member for doing so.
Would you like me to do it for everybody?
Yes.
Because I choose to have you guys handle these things like adults, and...
An adult wouldn't speak while I was speaking.
Okay, can you continue?
I, yes.
Are you finished?
No, I'm not.
Or are we continuing?
I'm going to continue. And I still, the only person that's told us that it's not standard procedure to have these lines marked is the city administrator, and I feel like we need a more expert opinion on that. I don't think it is, it should be standard procedure that these lines are not marked if there's a possibility that they were going to be demolished or, you know, crushed during this project. And we have no way of knowing if this project is actually what caused this damage. So why would we, the city, pay for this if there was no further investigation? We just wrote a check for damage that we have no idea that we were responsible for, or the contractor we hired was even responsible for. And that is not the way that things should be handled, and I think we need a more professional opinion. I would like for the city attorney to review the contract and make a determination about that, and I would like to hear from the contractor, or maybe someone else that does that type of work, as to whether or not the line should have been marked.
You know, as I put in the memo to you yesterday, is 811 is to locate services, and they do not locate private water service lines nor sewer laterals. So if the council's request is that this be done, then it would have to be done outside the free service of the 811 locates, and it would be additional financial burden to each project that we do. And remember that, in my 25 years of doing this, I've never seen a sewer lateral damaged like this, so shallow and damaged. So this isn't a typical occurrence that happens all the time. It's, seems to be very rare, and to take action that maybe add cost to every one of our projects moving forward would be fixing a problem that's not really a problem.
So back to my original question, how do we know that the collapse of the sewer line was caused by the street work and...
It happened within days of the sewage backup...
Okay, I understand. I'm not saying that the timing doesn't line up. I'm saying that, how do you know, without a shadow of a doubt, that the street work caused the damage? Just because they happened during the same time doesn't necessarily mean that they, that one thing caused the other. And has anyone asked who the line, who, this SD1, who I'm assuming is responsible for these lines? Why was it not, if you're telling me that it should have been down further in the ground, why was it not? And do we know if this was a line that already had problems and needed to be replaced? Has SD1 been asked anything about any of this?
Well, the sewer line was probably installed at the time of the home construction, which I'm assuming that house, from the looks of it, was probably constructed in the 1940s. It was a clay pipe, which would be indicative of the type of sewer lateral that would have been installed back then. So you got to figure 60, 80 years of service this line had, and then it was damaged or collapsed at the exact same time we were there on top of it, replacing the pavement. So I think the, everything lines up to show that, you know, it was a direct result of the activity that was happening six inches above it. Now, of course, you know, who knows the rules, the regulations, the inspections, and what happened back in 1930, 40, 50, whenever that house was constructed, and why was it installed so shallow? I guarantee you, there is not a soul alive that would know why that was. It's not typical, and I don't think anybody would be able to explain why that happened or why it was allowed to happen. It just, it's just the fact that it just was, you know? So, you know, it's unfortunate, and something that you don't typically see.
I understand that, but that still doesn't mean that the city is responsible. It could possibly mean that SD1 is responsible, but did anybody ask them?
Okay. If you want to put the additional...
Is no the answer? I mean, I, I don't know...
I'm speaking now.
Okay, that's fine.
If you want to put your additional questions into a memo, and then send it to us, and then we'll get the answers, and we'll talk about it in caucus. Cool? All right. Any other new business? All right. Legislation?
Hi, first we have an ordinance of the amending the zoning map of the city of Erlanger County of Kenton in the area of approximately 1.26 acres located at 328 Dixie Highway, north of Dixie Highway and south of the railroad in Erlanger, from CC, Community Commercial Zone, to GEI, General Industrial Zone. There was a public hearing on July 8th, 2025, and at that public hearing, the Kenton County Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed map amendment on various grounds, and they also put a couple restrictions on there, which are enumerated in the ordinance. This is a first reading.
All right, Ms. Hoffman, if you can note in a minute the first reading of this ordinance, please.
Hi, next we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, authorizing the mayor to execute the statewide mutual aid agreement. This is kind of a new thing that's been brought about by, brought to our attention by the county, but it is statewide. As many know, there have been a lot of natural disasters in the last three, four, or five years throughout the state, and it seems like a lot of the areas that have been hit with natural disasters frankly are under resourced, under funded, in areas that haven't had a lot of first responders. So there've been, there's been a push, or there's been certainly a response from first responders throughout the state to assist these areas. And what this does is, you know, right now we have a northern, generally a Northern Kentucky Emergency Mutual Aid Agreement amongst all the communities with Northern Kentucky. This makes it statewide. It provides opportunities for FEMA funding if we send our folks to eastern Kentucky, central Kentucky, western Kentucky. Gallatin County had bad flooding not that long ago, and it just sort of creates this statewide mutual aid agreement. So this municipal order allows the mayor to sign this statewide mutual aid agreement.
All right. Do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Cahill, Mr. Hermes, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Hi, next we have a municipal order of the city of Erlanger in Kenton County, Kentucky, approving the mayor's appointment of Mark Collier as city administrator pursuant to KRS 83A080, Section 3, effective September 1st, 2025. Current city administrator, Peter Glenn, is retiring as of August 31st, which creates this vacancy pursuant to the statute. The mayor makes a recommendation for city administrator, which then becomes ratified by council. This does require a vote of council.
All right, do I entertain a motion that we adopt this municipal order as read? Mr. Hermes, Mr. Farmer, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations.
Can I say something? Okay. Thank you. I am incredibly excited to take this role on and work with each of you more intimately. I want to thank Mr. Glenn as well. He's been a great mentor to me, and really appreciate the time that we've been able to share together. Mayor Fetti, thank you very much for this honor and distinction, and to the council members, I can't wait to get to know you a little bit more intimately as well. Jack, Sherry, you guys are rocks at the city. I'm going to need you, but big shoes to fill. So, thank you for everybody that's here to see this. There's not that many, but I appreciate you guys. I love the city of Erlanger, and I'm going to bust my tail for everybody here, so thank you.
And I know that he doesn't want any, any accolades, but tonight is Peter's last meeting, and we would not be anywhere near where we are in this city without this man right here. His visionary leadership, his almost dad-like qualities, leadership capabilities that he's instilled in all of us, and the Public Works team, I mean, our park improvements, our city beautification, our city night out, summer send-off, I know I'm going to forget a whole bunch of phenomenal things that exist in our city that are all due to this man right here, and I am so blessed and honored to call him my friend, and I've enjoyed every moment of our time together. So thank you.
Are there any announcements? Yes.
Just a reminder about the reopening of Sherborne taking place next week. I don't think anybody said anything about that earlier. I know it was on all of our desks, but next Tuesday, August 12th at 4:30 at Sherborne Park.
Okay, all right. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one announcement. I'm sorry, I misforgot. The Fill the Cruiser is this Thursday at Kroger at 4 o'clock, so everyone come out and donate school supplies. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. All right, do I entertain a motion that we adjourn? Mr. Hermes, Ms. Jasper Lucas, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Have a good evening.